I'm not turning on my camera.
Here we are. We're good.
Hey, Richard.
Okay, Caleb, how are you tonight?
Good. I like the sun out today.
Oh, what?
I like being sunny today.
Oh, yeah. There we are. Okay.
More like springtime, right?
You know, it's right around the corner.
Yeah.
And there's a little less snow every day and it's, I can hear it off my roof, like, in the middle of the night, you can hear these, you know, pounds of melting snow.
Ah.
Hit in the ground and it's, it doesn't bother me at all. And I know what it is and it's just, you know, spring's a little closer, that's all I say.
Hey, Richard. How you feeling?
Hey, Bob.
How you doing?
Good. So being a good weekend.
Just still involved with all those, sign things on the walls. The graphics. Ritual, yeah.
Oh, today I was just driving back from work and then there's a lot of things happening around the city. I think that some of the bridges are closed. And then there's a, there is a tractor trailer that seems to have, run, run over a, a traffic light, you know, like clip.
Oh, yeah, that happens all the time.
That never helps around here.
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
They're too long to be in low streets downtown. When the sun was over Merrick Street, they, they used to try to turn on by the auditorium. But just right in front of the church.
Yeah.
But it always get hung up, either there'd be a car too close to the corner.
Okay.
Hey, Sinead.
Hi, there.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Shabane.
I'm.
Hello.
Well, George is the last name.
How you doing, Richard?
George? Yes, hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Okay.
How are you?
All is well.
Hi, George, how are you this evening?
Very good, very good. Nice to see you.
Thank you, nice to see you as well.
I was worried about my camera.
Yeah, I know, sometimes we have technical difficulty. It happened to Jimmy two meetings ago, but it's happened to me in the past as well too, so. We're all learning as we go, huh?
Yeah, really. Something new every day, I mean, that's grown.
How's everyone getting along?
Good. We're waiting each other.
Very quietly.
Yeah.
Just, you know.
It's not the same without being able to see everybody and talk to everybody before the meetings and after the meetings and say hello and stuff, you know.
Yeah, I know, you can't tell any of that.
No, it's just, you know, the commodity of just saying hello and being in person with people.
I can't believe a year's gone by.
I know, huh? Geez, yeah, it'll be, yeah, I think it's March now and whole thing started the weekend of March thirteenth, fifteenth, yeah. Yeah, next week or so, wow, yeah.
It's gonna be interesting to see how much of this stuff sticks.
Yeah.
These meetings, you know.
Yeah.
I know in my business, we do a lot of trade shows.
Yeah.
All over the way, but they're all gone. No more.
Oh. Well, remember when Jeff had, before he left, he said, a lot of places, you know, the cities and towns in the states were talking about keeping these things going for, for meetings.
Oh, yeah, a certain amount of it certainly will.
Yeah, so. We'll see how we're regulated.
Yeah.
I, I, I know in the Commonwealth offices, like the Department of Revenue and things like that, that deal with the cities and towns.
Yeah.
Which have been on Zoom meetings since the beginning. I mean, everything has been going forward without a hitch.
Yeah.
So you may see it.
And a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff in the courts of all Zoom and everything else too, yeah. Yeah.
I noticed the other day coming up one twenty-eight in Lotham. Uh, there's a new Zoom building.
Oh, wow.
I don't know if it's brand new, but the big, the Zoom sign is up there.
Yeah.
First time.
Well, you figure this part of a lot of real estate that's faking right now and a lot of it's not gonna be, a lot of people aren't gonna be moving back into those buildings. Yeah. Let's see.
Who's Jerry?
I haven't seen, yeah, Jeff hasn't logged on yet, no, okay.
Hello.
Nope. Hello, Jerry.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. So I have almost six thirty, so we'll give it a couple minutes. Are you almost all set, Fran?
Yes, I'm ready to go whenever.
Okay, I'll just give it one more minute to make it official. My, my computer's saying six thirty, but I'll give an extra minute. Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Monday, March first, twenty twenty-one. Tonight, we have two matters on the agenda. One is a continuation from our last meeting on February eighteenth, which is a special permit and site plan review for sixty Fletcher Street. Cause the Engine Enterprises has applied for site plan review and special permit approval to rehabilitate the existing structure of the above address and convert it into a bank and office building. The property is in the urban neighborhood mixed-use zoning district in the downtown Lowell Historic District. The conversion requires site plan review approval per section eleven point four to modify a parking lot with more than fourteen parking spaces and special permit approval per section twelve point four G two for the proposed drive-through teller. Uh, we had a good meeting last time and we asked if it could be continued so we can get some more traffic information. Uh, so the meeting was continued to see if the applicant can get some more traffic information for us. So saying that, at this point, I will turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name's Brian Malisi with Woodman and Associates, uh, here representing Kazanjin Enterprises. And I guess I got some good news and some bad news. Uh, the good news is we have, uh, the applicant has reached out to a traffic consultant, uh, and has got him on board. I suppose the bad news is, as you guys probably foreshadowed a little bit at the last meeting, we don't have any information for you tonight. Uh, so I am simply here to, uh, request a continuance, uh, for this to give that traffic consultant a little bit more time, uh, to come up with some information.
Do you know how much time your traffic consultant indicated they might need?
Well, he was, he was away for most of the part of last week. We finally got ahold of him at the end of last week, so he really has just kind of gotten aboard.
Okay.
So I was going to maybe ask what your, maybe not your very next meeting, but the meeting after that maybe.
So I think Fran, the next meeting is March fifteenth, a meeting after that would be the first Monday in April.
Mr. Chairman, it's April fifth.
April fifth, April fifth, okay. All right, um, before we do that, let your board members have any questions about the traffic consultant or all, any, any issues?
If I may.
Sure, Mr. Fischek, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Brian, after the, after the last meeting, and again, you're kind of a, and it's not the applicant's fault really, but in a situation where we don't have a city traffic engineer, uh, on staff at the moment. And, um, you know, we've handled this in different ways, uh, before. Now, without getting the results of the traffic engineer, I don't want to make it seem like we're delaying things, but I'm more inclined, uh, and I guess we could wait to see what the results of the, of, of your own traffic engineering firm. But really to just, uh, for ease of, of, of just having some traffic comments from a, from a third-party uh, traffic engineer rather than one hired by the client. And again, I, you know, traffic engineering in many ways is, is, it's, um, you can look at it from many different lenses, um, and so and, and having said that, we may get recommendations or report back from whoever you're, uh, contracting with and, and would seem to, to, to make sense to the board. I don't know. Uh, but I really am more inclined to have the city select a, a, a traffic engineer and, and, uh, now, the other thing is you could provide the report and then maybe we want to have a peer review. I just don't want to appear like we're going out of our way to delay things, you know? I mean, that's, that's the conundrum in a, in a, in a nutshell, I think. So I don't know how the other board members feel, but that's, and again, we may get a report back that's, that appears to be very reasonable and what, you know, what the, um, the methodology and what they're recommending and what their comments are. But in case they're not, I just, like I said, I don't want to make it seem like we're giving anybody a hard time or prolonging the process.
Yeah.
I mean, just to follow up with what we discussed at the last meeting, um, is I, I notice it's gonna be a big intersection because it's gonna be coming, the whole new Lord Overpass is being done. Over, it's gonna be coming into the, and it's gonna be the gateway going into the ACO. And I guess some of the questions that we had last time was, um, you know, there was two exits, one in and one out, and the question was, what, um, you know, was, what did planning staff back there at the time with, um, the traffic engineer? And I know they had a site visit that they agreed with, both of them were just a rear one. And by the way, we did reach out to the prior traffic, uh, engineer and she was unavailable. Uh, she's had some surgery, so she had no information to help us out to, to see what her notes may have been or what she remembered from the site visit. And, and I know the other question was, what the traffic flow would be inside the site. Um, you know, we talked about that crosswalk going over to Dunkin' Donuts. Um, uh, so basically a lot of that traffic mitigation would be, you know, coming right then and, and a lot of it with the traffic situation, I think Mr. Fischek brought up last time is, you know, how do you get a true traffic count with COVID right now? Yeah. And then we have construction out there, so that can be a little, little difficult to come up with the traffic situation that we can think could be realistically as things continue to change. And that's the only comment I have. I know other board members may check, uh, speaking, I bet you, if you would.
Yeah, I just have a comment. I agree with your assessment, Jerry. I would be in favor of, of looking at the, you know, evaluating the applicant's information from their traffic engineering firm and, and reacting to that. I think, you know, it'll, it'll be a good starting point anyway. And paying particular attention to the drive-through teller. That, that always complicates an intersection like that. Um, as well as paying close attention to pedestrian safety and access in and around there. You're gonna have apartments, you know, there's gonna be a lot of pedestrian activity as well. But as far as the traffic is concerned, I would be willing to listen to what they have to offer first. And then reacting to that.
Thank you, Richard. Any other board members have any comments?
Mrs. Chairman, I have a similar um, agreement with, with Richard on looking at what they come up, if they hire a certified traffic engineer to a, a traffic management, people who do this every day of the week, you're plugging in numbers based on the number of people in the building, based on peak hours, drop peak hours. Uh, we can't look through the, uh, into the future because we don't know what, how long COVID's gonna be a detriment to people driving on roads, but um, I think I'd like to see what the traffic engineer, their traffic engineers put to say.
Yep, thank you, Bob. Um, Caleb, any questions, comments?
Uh, yes, Chairman, so, um, I concur with the rest of the board, um, regarding, um, it would be good to have an objective look and, um, I think that it is certainly a challenge that with the city, um, not having a, uh, traffic engineer at the moment. So, uh, either pre-review or, uh, a, um, third-party consultant will make a lot of sense right now. Um, I want to particularly emphasize also that, um, I want to make sure that whoever reviewed the, um, the traffic will also look at pedestrian safety and circulation within the site, um, is one of the criteria in the site plan review to maximize pedestrian safety as well as vehicle safety. So, um, I will think that that will involve, um, also in, um, looking at the pathway toward Dunkin' Donuts, knowing that that will be a, uh, major pedestrian route.
Crosswalk.
Right, and I think you were there that last time too, Caleb, correct? Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Sinead, I know you were unavailable last meeting, but anything you want to say? I don't, I'm sure you reviewed the stuff that we have. I know you're very diligent.
Yeah, I actually do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I won't comment on the traffic, but I did have a question, um, and I missed our meeting two weeks ago. I was able to get through all the material, but not all of the comments from the planning board, so forgive me if this is redundant. But I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the building to be redeveloped. Um, and so the comment I have, I'm not expecting it to be answered tonight, um, but maybe the applicant can speak to it when we meet next, is how the facades on Fletcher Street and Dutton Street, um, are going to be improved. Um, I'd really love to hear more about that. And also, um, I really see Fletcher Street, I know that the, I think the main entry is gonna be more on the Dutton Street side, at least from reading the plans. Um, but I'd really love to hear about, you know, how you're kind of activating the street scape on Fletcher Street, because I think that was more, probably the more traditional for an entry. Um, so I'd love to kind of hear about those improvements and how that's really gonna activate the street scape, because I think it's a building with a lot of potential and a location with a lot of potential. So that's my comment tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Um, so back to the applicant, um, anything further you want to add or just, uh, the, the continuance?
Yeah, no, I did, I did want to say that I'm, I'm not, I don't have the, uh, um, all the presentation boards and stuff available.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh,
We understand that.
Yep, to remember Galan's question, I will talk to the architect and we'll get those answers, maybe invite him to be on the call next time. Um, there was a, a fairly, uh, extensive, uh, architectural package that was put in there that, that they'd been dealing with, the historical people. Um, I don't want to say anything and screw something up, so I'll get the guys, the professionals who did that and, and get that answer too. Um, and so I just want to understand, just to make sure that I understand that I'm heading in the right direction with the traffic consultant, Mr. Chair, um, that we will continue along, um, you know, our, the applicant hiring the traffic consultant, uh, coming up with a, a report or something for the board to review. I, I believe that's the way we're headed, correct?
Yes, I believe that's the consensus of the board members, and if I'm speaking out of turn, please jump in, board members, right?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just comment, and I, and I would agree that is correct, that appears to be the consensus of the board. Um, I, I just, the applicant, uh, in that scenario, though, I, I, you may, we may be looking at a request for a peer review. Um, you know, after the presentation, you know, just don't know. We just don't know at this point in time.
But we need them to go forward first with the presentation, correct? So to move forward.
The other, the other option in my mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other option in my mind is if the applicant was to pay and the city was to, to, to select a traffic, uh, engineering firm. And again, it's very unusual, because we don't have a traffic engineer on site, and that's all. And again, I just put that out there because it is, uh, there's a lot going on in that site at that intersection. And, um, been doing this a long time and I've seen it from the development side. And it's not to say anybody does anything wrong. It's just the idea you, you, you're hired by a particular contractor uh, as the traffic firm, you can look at it through different lenses. Doesn't mean you're doing anything wrong. Uh, but you're looking at it from a different lens, so, um, and, and we may be fine with, with what the recommendation is. But I, again, I just put that out there. I'd be, if there was some impasse as to what they're recommending and what we feel the concerns are, then again, I don't want to appear that we're delaying the process, but I certainly, uh, and I can't speak for my other, the other board members, but I, I, it just may be a case where we'd be looking for a peer review. That, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fischek. So I think, is that clear, your question, Brian? I mean, basically, so.
It does.
Okay, all right, all right. So, um, there's been a request to have the matter continued to, uh, April fifth meeting. Uh, what's the request of the board for the continuance?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until the April fifth planning board meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Malovich. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. That motion carries. This matter will be continued till April fifth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have a good night.
Very much. Um, moving back on the agenda, um, I inadvertently jumped over the minute, so we have no objection up. I'd like to take those now, so I won't forget as we go further in the meeting. So we do have the approval for the minutes for February eighteenth. Any other board members have any questions, corrections, or comments on the minutes for February eighteen?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a few, just minor.
Sure.
Um, uh, revisions. Uh, noted that, uh, on the, um, special permit and site plan review for sixty Fletcher Street. Um, on the first page, I was listed as asking about the vertical granite curbing and the crosswalks. Uh, that was actually, uh, Mr. Chairman, that was you that was requesting that, so I think that we could just change that. Um, and then on the next page on the discussion, uh, David Gray was, was, um, noted as, as making a couple statements. It was actually Mr. Kazanjin, uh, that was speaking to the board. So there's those, just a, a few minor.
Yeah, because I don't, Mr. Gray didn't say, say too much at all, no.
Yeah, no, and I actually listened to the, you know, like, I don't have anything more to do. I listened to the tape before the meeting, just to verify it. So with those revisions, I would just make the motion to, uh, approve the, uh, the minutes as amended.
Okay, do we have a second for motion as, uh, to cut the minutes as amended for February eighteenth?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, chair votes yes? Any opposition? Hearing none.
I'm, I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Just because I wasn't there.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so those are approved. Thank you. Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have a proposed zoning amendment. Proposed zoning amendment for four Wigan Street and one fifty-three Willie Street. The applicant is seeking to amend the Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Mass, with respect to chapter two ninety, therefore entitled Lowell Zoning Code, by extending the existing U M F zoning district, which is the urban neighborhood multifamily to include an area presently zoned light industrial at four Wigan Street and one fifty-three Willie Street. Um, the planning board just makes a recommendation on zoning, so whatever the planning board votes tonight, this matter will be going back before the city council for the final vote. So saying that, we'll turn it over at this point in time. May we hear from the applicant?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, Attorney George Theodore, one thirty-three Market Street, representing the applicant, Lynn Lowell LLC, Mr. Philip Brienzey is the manager. This process goes back, uh, uh, approximately a year ago. Uh, Mr. Brienzey, uh, or Lynn Lowell LLC owns eight and four Wigan Street. And in that process of, of trying to, to, and looking at this property here for a residential, uh, development, uh, they contacted the City of Lowell to, and approached them to purchase one fifty-three Willie Street and to incorporate it into their lot. This would provide them with approximately fifteen thousand square feet that would enable a residential development. The City of Lowell reviewed it. One fifty-three Willie Street itself, uh, was voted to be a surplus piece of property. It was taken, uh, and by the city, uh, in nineteen thirty-nine. And the city has owned it ever since that time, and it has remained, uh, as an undeveloped piece of property. Uh, along with the city's vote to vote that property a surplus property, uh,
Uh, along with the city's vote to vote that property as surplus property, uh the city entered into, or were still negotiating, there's certain elements that have to be dealt with uh with the H C D to finalize the land acquisition agreement with the City of Lowell for 153 Willie Street, but they did place a value on it to 55,000, and that was voted on by the city council back in uh May of 2020. Now, along with the purchasing of that property, uh 153 Willie Street is zoned light industrial uh as well as four Wigan Street. And it made sense for us to go ahead and petition the City of Lowell and ask for a zoning extension to extend the U M F zone through the light industrial zone that would allow for the development of this lot uh and combine it in approximately 15,000 square feet. That has been done. We presented it to the city council, to the law department. They reviewed it as something that would be appropriate as not being spot zoning, but would be a logical extension of the zoning for a specific purpose. Uh, as I would always say, every zoning extension, you know, has has a meaning, has a story, and and this one here is to develop underutilized parcels and to make them uh a residential parcel, to make them uh uh usable re- residences and for uh that would uh also provide tax revenue to the city. Along with that, we've had the cooperation of uh the city's urban renewal project manager, Mr. Joseph Genowitz. Uh, Mr. Genowitz uh and his department have been terrific from day one. These types of land acquisitions do take time. This parcel is within the acre revitalization zone, so it needs approval through the state as well for the city to sell it to a private individual for development. And you have a letter before you dated March 1st from Mr. Genowitz, the urban project renewal manager, describing briefly the history of this uh and also the current application and stating and summarizing on this. In summation, D P D has been and continues to be a proponent of carrying out the acre plan. And that would be the development of parcels such as this, underutilized parcels into residential uh units. Uh, this proposal generally coincides with the intent of the plan. If the board finds that the application to rezone these properties merits approval, I humbly ask the board recommend that the rezone be approved by the city council. Uh, and you have that letter of recommendation in with your papers. Also, I I just want to touch upon uh the comments um by D P D and uh by uh Fran uh Francis Sigliano, the senior planner, who has recommended that the rezoning go forward, that it can be done, and it can be got done without uh any derogation of the intent of the zoning ordinance. We have a concept plan. I didn't present it to the board. It's kind of a raw concept plan uh that we have. The site and the topography of this site is difficult. Uh, the elevations are difficult. It's it's going to be a tough site to work, but my client is willing to go forward and 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 do the work that is necessary. The uh U M F zone would allow of 15,000 square foot U M F zone would allow for multiple units there. We would have to go to the zoning board as well, though, however, because we don't have adequate frontage. Uh, this would be consistent with what is being done for other parcels there. There are other residential units. Uh, and it would certainly clean up, clean up this lot and be an improvement to the acre and uh uh further the intent of the uh acre revitalization plan. So I asked for the planning board's uh uh approval of this and its recommendation to the city council to allow this step to go forward so that we could go ahead and and take action and develop this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. I'm I'm just gonna ask you one question now that I have you before we turn it over to the public. So what, when I read Mr. Genowitz's um uh comments, obviously. Um, so, and I know the question is, the site does have the um slope issue, because obviously I went and visited the site. But when he puts down, in the common conditions, he fills it out and he says, because the property would be combined, the aforementioned um geographic issue would be able to be overcome. So by being overcome, it must be by your client working with it, leveling it, or do what he has to do, I imagine?
I I yeah, I think what he means by 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 my client acquiring the entire parcel allows him to have control over it to 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 go ahead and and uh and level it out.
Yeah.
And uh and to move it around.
Off the street, it goes up, it goes up quite a bit, but.
It goes up quite a bit.
Yeah, because, I mean, when you look at it from
And and Wigan Street goes right along the side of that.
Right, when you drive up Wigan like that, and you look to the left. Yeah, okay.
That's right.
Okay. Yeah, because I noticed that, because I went up, obviously, I went on both streets, back and forth, and went around. Okay. All right, I just wanted to have that question first. Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything further you want to add, um, Council, before I turn it over to the public?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point in time, if anybody would like to speak in favor of the project to be rezoned? In favor of the rezoning? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. At this point in time, would anybody like to speak uh against the rezoning? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members. Any of the board members have any questions, comments at this time?
I have.
Sure.
I think, uh, you know, the proposal makes all kinds of sense that uh the property in question has absolutely no value in the light industrial zone. It's, you know, it's just, it doesn't make any sense to um extend the zone to the U M F um classification. It makes sense to turn that whole hilly area into a residential community. That's all. I'm in favor of the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. I'm sure Council concedes. Any of the board members have any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Bob.
Um, I also agree with Mr. Um Rabidow Senior Moment.
Mr. Lockhart.
Mr. Lockhart. Um, we've lost my train now. I I agree with his comments, and I also think that this project will, as it's consistent with the acre redevelopment plan.
Yeah, that's true.
Makes all kinds of sense. Um, it's going to improve the acre. There's no doubt about that. And it offer new housing for people, hopefully affordable housing in the acre. That's all my comments are.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any other board members?
I have a question.
Sure.
Caleb, for for attorney. So um i- is is the is the idea to consolidate the lot, or would the lot be uh remains as three different lots after after the development? Just, I I know it's conceptual right now, but what's the plan?
No, no, the the lots will be combined uh into into one lot. So that the entire lot will be will be developed.
So we are speaking of um the two, only the two lot in light industry or all three lots?
No, there 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 are actually, i- as you can see, there are, there are, there are three lots that will be combined. It's in the rectangular, uh, it'll be, you know, in the shape of the rectangle that we have here. The three lots will be uh eight Wigan Street, uh four Wigan Street, and 153 Willie Street. And those three lots combined to have uh 15,000, for my calculations, 15,085 square feet.
Got you, got it. Well, thanks for the clarification. I I I, again, I I concur with the rest of the member regarding the benefits and also as as a planner, I I I like, like, then, once you consolidate a lot, then you won't have the problem of the frontage not having enough frontage then. So so I I I will think that that's also a good idea to to um combine lots that are otherwise not usable or required a variance. So I'm in support of um the zoning change to um to um us us as a process of um of um this development.
Thank you, Caleb. Any other board members? Jerry or Sinead?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one comment. Um, I do, I do agree that I think the redevelopment of the of the lot would be an improvement to the neighborhood in some way that marks the um entrance to Wigan Street from Willie Street. And so I think by being able to redevelop that parcel in the adjacent uh U M F district would be an improvement to that site and to the street as well. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fichette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Theodore, it seems like um we we've talked about zoning changes for years with you. I had many different parts of the city. Um, and uh so, you know, a little bit of my background, because I was involved on that initial master plan uh committee in the rezoning of the city and how we looked at different parcels. And as you know, we've dissected parcels and protected those to the M3 uh in knowing the original intent. Uh, so I do know, uh, especially light industry has been considered very valuable in the city, because it's not a much bit. Um, although manufacturing is a difficult uh type of uh business to attract. However, when you look at and you look at the city zoning uh map, it is interesting to look at this this area, because it's it looks like a piece of a puzzle, the way it's carved out. And I suspect it's because the city owned that light industry land, and they thought, well, you know, what if, we might as well keep it light industry uh where we own it and 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 it was considered valuable. But obviously, this actually changes, it appears to be very logical. Um, and as you know, my my biggest, uh, one of my biggest issues when we look at zoning changes is potential use conflicts down the road, because usually there was, there was reasoning behind why there's either a buffer zone or why this particular zone is in place. Um, but clearly, what's what's nice with this here is that Willie Street itself is really the the kind of the buffer between the 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 change in the zone, in the light industry zone, heading down um uh Dutton Street. So I I mean, it is logical. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I took that ride, too, and I I didn't realize I'd be looking at the hood ornament of my car right in my face as I went up.
Good thing it wasn't snow, huh?
Yeah, exactly. Um, and actually, the view you get from the gas company on the other side was actually very interesting. True. Um, so I I think it's it's logical. I think it it certainly makes sense. And uh it it's as uh as, you know, Bob, I I as a former city planner, I would expect you to reference that as well. I I appreciate what we got from Joe Genowitz. Um, you know, when you look at zoning changes, you look at the bigger planning documents uh as well, and I think it it meets the spirit of of uh the acre plan as well. So um, yeah, I think this is a, I think this is a win-win. We're taking a piece of parcel, piece of land that's putting it back on the tax roll uh for the city and have some housing development at the same time. So I certainly am in favor of of uh this proposal, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Fichette. Yeah, I just want to follow up briefly where Jerry left off, when you're talking about the light industrial. And I know over the years, we've been cautioned about the light industrial, because we don't have a lot of it left in the city. And um as planned, as in the past, we've always been informed through the city, you know, um this is an area that we really don't have much on, and trying to preserve as much of the, much as of it that we can. And then, you know, but each piece of land, as we know, is 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 um is um different of itself. And when you look at it, that it's been in tax title since 1939. That's a long period of time that no one really come forward to work it out, um, to try to put something in there. So you have a um a lot that's that's had vacant since then. And the fact that, you know, you've been working with the city, you have a land agreement. Um, obviously, the land agreement, I did read through part of it. Um, I just think that it looks like it might be the purchase and sale was like back in 2017 or something, so um
Yeah.
But obviously, you've worked with the city for a period of time. So obviously, you have, the city manager was involved in it. You had the council got involved in it to do the land acquisition. Um, so I think, you know, this fits into the area to be um where the zoning change um would be appropriate. So therefore, I have, I have no problems with it. Like I say, we try to keep the light industrial, but here, it's kind of really, like Jerry said, separated from that street over to next street going down Dutton and everywhere else. So I think uh it'd be appropriate, and it will make use of that lot, because um without uh residential going in there, I don't know what else is going to go in on just that single lot with that um with um the slope of the land. Um, so obviously, when you can combine it to another parcel, then I think that's what makes it work. Without that other parcel, Council, I don't, I think it'd be very difficult to put your project together, you know? And I'm sure that had a lot of consideration on requesting the um acquisition from the city as well as the zone change. So um but um I I think it would be a good um mix for for the zone change. So saying that, uh, any board members have any follow-up comments? As well, while the board member said, yes, Mr. Lockhart?
Just a follow-up on what uh Mr. Fichette said. The the light industrial, I remember discussions about, you know, it's being depleted citywide, and we got to protect it, but you know, and it's not just manufacturing, and light industrial can be just a series of open garages for carpenters or whatever it might be. The lot itself, where it's located, it, none of that makes any sense there. It it is meant for residential development. It would be perfect. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Any other board members have any follow-up? If not, what would be the request of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we uh send a uh positive recommendation uh endorsing the proposed uh zoning change from the light industry to the uh urban neighborhood multifamily. As presented, I think it's uh, I think it's uh based on the factors that it does um meet uh and work towards uh meeting the goals and objectives of the acre, of the uh acre urban revitalization and development plan um and that it um still maintains, I think, um the intent of the zoning in that area. So I think it's it's a logical extension of the uh U M uh U N uh yeah, the U N M, U M F zone.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Fichette. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes, yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. Um, Council, the motion is approved to recommend the rezoning change. Um, by looking at our notes from Fran here, it indicates um Council that you're on the city council meeting for a week from tomorrow night, uh next Tuesday on March 9th. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
We wish you well. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No, thanks.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, um, the only, any board members have any further comments or follow-ups?
I have historic board report, Mr. Chairman. Just a few different items. Uh, our doors open Lowell program that is always scheduled for early May. We've canceled that again, just based, you know, because of what's happening. That's two years in a row, which is unfortunate, but that decision has been made. Couple other things that have been happening. Downtown Lowell Historic District building markers of green markers that uh Steve Stoll really takes it upon himself to get it done. Identified 24 new ones to be in uh developed and installed over the this year. Um, and to date, there is 44 of those around the downtown Lowell Historic District. And the other thing, uh, I I think is kind of significant is the the social media impact that the historic board um is having. Uh I'm going to just read a paragraph that Steve has written. Social media continues to be a very popular and effective education and outreach tool for the board. The board's Facebook page has 5,946 likes. The board's Facebook page has 5,946 likes while individual posts continue to reach in the thousands." Some interesting stuff that goes out, you know, about historic buildings around the city. And that's just an indication of the level of interest that people have in that in the history of the city.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any follow-up? I couldn't help but think about Mr. Fichat the other night when I was reading an article in the local paper about the Fork Bridge. And they talked about the three different locations. And I guess one of them now is talking about putting it more across from Old Ferry Road instead of where it is currently. I know Jerry's been updating us through MCAG because I couldn't help but think of Jerry when I was reading the article.
Oh, yeah.
I'll just comment, Mr. Chairman, and I did attend, not that meeting, that was the city council presentation. But they had the outreach, outreach meeting that I did attend that. And which was, which was very positive because the comments, for the most part, were supporting that option three with the, where the bridge is really lining up with the intersection of Old Ferry. And even the engineers are really leaning towards that as the best option from just going through the permitting process and then really the finished product. Now, obviously, there are some costs involved with all options and there, it's unclear. Option two pretty much is off the table. The permitting cost on that perhaps could even outweigh option three. But option three at the moment seems to be the most expensive. But I really think, you know, we've been waiting so long for the bridge that, and it's something that hopefully will be there for 100, 100-plus years. Certainly want to put the best foot forward for that, for that crossing. And there was no vote taken at the city council meeting. There was no need for a vote. But it was really just to present what had been presented at an MCAG in the outreach meeting. So I think the city council, I did watch it on LTC, just to take a look at it. I think the city council was leaning towards what was presented as well as far as trying to line up with Old Ferry. But obviously, it really is ways down to mass dot in what the final, final recommendation will be. But, you know, stay tuned. I think they're talking about a ribbon cutting in 2028. So who knows?
Yeah, I did see that. I'm like, wow. Maybe we might be alive to watch that. We've been talking about it for a while, that whether we'd be around, but who knows? Maybe, hopefully, right? We've always had that goal, but things change, you know, so. Does anybody else have any follow-up or anything from staff, from Fran or anything or?
I actually have something. I met with the Community Preservation Committee. We had our first convening meeting on February 11th, so about almost a month ago. And so it was the first time that we met and we elected a chair. So Adam Back was elected as the chair. He was appointed by the city manager as a member of the committee. And I think he does work at UMF Lowell. So Caleb, I know Adam.
Yeah, we know. He was my boss. Yeah, he used to work in planning and development. Yeah, we've worked with Adam for many, many years.
Oh, yeah.
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 And we elected Eric Slagel as the vice chair to fill in if Adam was not available. Yeah, so and he'll be also overseeing the committee, the CPC committee. And I learned some interesting things while I was there. First of all, because this is the first year that the Community Preservation Act is adopted by the City of Lowell, the schedule for this year's application period will be a little bit different than years going forward. But this year before, we can accept applications for the community preservation funding. They have to adopt, the city has to adopt a plan. So the staff is going to be proposing a plan to the committee that will ultimately be adopted by city council. So we'll make a recommendation to city council to adopt the plan. Our next meeting is March 25th. And I think we might see a draft of that plan by that date. And so our goal is to adopt a plan before the summer and then potentially go through eligibility applications beginning in June and then accepting applications in July for the funding. And then we would potentially make a recommendation to award funding in November of this year. So that's all pretty exciting, I think. And then going forward, what they described is what we would hope to do is accept applications and eligibility in the spring of 2022 and then make awards in the summer. So it'll be on a slightly advanced schedule, but this year it will be a little bit dragged out into the November timeframe, I think. And then the other, I was just going to add, the other piece that I learned is that, well, I knew that the act is a 1% property surcharge, property tax surcharge for the City of Lowell. So that's where the funding is coming from. But that the state has matched about 17% to 18% of the funding that was collected. So there was a matching program through the state. And currently, there is over a million dollars in the account. So we'll be awarding potentially up to a million dollars or more in projects this year. And the projects have to contribute to historic sites, open spaces or housing in the City of Lowell. So I'm really excited to be part of the committee and I thank everyone for appointing me, the planning board appointee and look forward to see what kind of applications we get this year.
Now, is it Dylan from our staff who's on the board with you now? I remember one of our new staff members came on. Was it Dylan?
Yeah, I think it's Dylan and Fran. Is that right, Fran?
Yes.
So it's yourself and Dylan Fran? Is that what it is?
So Dylan is going to...
I know he's on listens and I see him on the thing with Jess, so I want to give him his attention.
Yes, both of us, mostly Dylan will be staffing the board, but I'm going to attend the meetings and I'm a supervisor, so I'll be in the loop as well.
Okay, that sounds interesting. So we know a lot of people on the board, obviously, so. Yeah, so Sinead, you'd be very comfortable. You know, a lot of people from the city working with you there. So we're sure. Good luck. Anybody else? Any other board members have any follow-ups? If not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Ooh.
Motion is made. And second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. We are adjourned. Good night and thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Night, everyone. Take care.
Night, everyone. Take care. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.